Good morning, it's 7:00 PM. Great, how are you?
Not great.
Oh, no.
You guys stay over there. Ah, okay.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Harris not present. Commissioner Selly.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Akers, present. Commissioner Radzik, absent. Is it like a cold thing that you got?
Yeah, it's like a respiratory thing. It just came on a day or so ago, it hit me like a hammer.
Have you been around some kids?
I'm always around kids.
Other than yours?
Raise that because I'm on toes and I guess I'm always around my kids anyways.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second to approve the agenda as presented, on the favor.
Aye.
And we oppose. Okay, approval of the minutes from the August 4th.
So moved to approve the minutes from August 4th, 2015, planning permission.
Alrighty.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes from the August 4th meeting, on the favor.
Aye.
Thank you, because I haven't done minutes in forty years.
They look good, I noticed when I looked more.
Thank you. Okay. No further hearing. Anyone have any communications correspondence that they've received as commissioners that we need to know about? Matters of consideration, okay. Old business, comments and suggestions from Commissioners regarding recommendations from Parks and Recreation Plan Survey, per our discussion at the August 4th meeting. The planner has something for us to start with and then anyone else who have their own comments, we could add them on.
Thank you for the record.
Did the slide like that?
This is basically a summary of the kind of summary that we've done, just kind of distilling down. What we did, I went back through the, I went back through the tallied summary results from the public workshop that we had. And for each of these areas, the three parks and just a category called general suggestions, these are all rank ordered by how people voted for them, the ideas that kind of got distilled up as far as what to do or what to propose or what future desires there were for these areas. So, as I was talking to Loretta when she first came in tonight, as we're moving forward with this process, we're trying to refine all the input that we've gotten over the course of a couple of months that we've been doing this and to find and distill that down into a set of goals and objectives. Last time we presented you with a really broad set of goals and objectives, broad in the nature that they cover things in the community in terms of new parks and recreation, parks and recreation as being an element of economic development, and also being an element of preserving the environment and also looking at an element of circulation just in terms of how people move around the community. And the goals that are written there are very broad brush. They're designed by that nature to be able to encompass different projects and opportunities that come before the community. We don't know if it happened in four years. In four years, somebody, we could have a, it'd be great if we had a benefact who would come in and say unload some money and say we're gonna build some type of a park or do that here. And then you may want to leverage some of that money to actually go for a state grant with broad goals and objectives that can easily fall within the guys at the master plan. So that's one of our recommendations, is to look at the, you know, take a look at what we've written, see if those resonate with what the message we want to put forward. Because everything that we're kind of proposing here in this package is really gonna be the marching orders for the Parks and Recreation Board once it is established by planning permission. And that's one of the recommendations in our, it's one of the first recommendations that we make. And kind of answered Loretta's question about if we were a community that had an established Parks and Recreation Board that had a dedicated channel of funding that had a budget, the state would expect us to show a five-year budget moving forward, just to guess at what we were going to do. We're gonna get exempt from that requirement in this case and I will definitely confirm with DNR before we do it because the county did this. We did not have that organizational structure in place. So we said the first goal is to create a parks and recreational structure, administrative structure, and their first goal will be to put together a budget under which to function. So by making those recommendations, I, we'll fulfill the state requirement. But getting a little deeper, being that these are the marching orders for that group moving forward, if there's particular things that we feel are very important that should be in the plan that are site-specific or project-specific or community event or community unity type of specific things that we feel need to be in, then we can call those out. And those can be called out in the objectives of, under those goals.
I have another question. In terms of organizational development, is there, have you found a recreational organizational design? Is there a...
There's many different formats, a lot of them are following what you guys are doing. Where you're selecting people that are representative of the community. And that's pretty much what most people try to do. But I think we're on the right track, designating the persons. We're looking for someone from the school district, we're looking for someone from the community, you know. We have people at large, you know. So you want to get a cross-section of the community to help with that.
And what size is appropriate?
I think if we look at, I'd have to go back and look at the goals and objectives. I think that we were talking originally to five or six people. It's in the, it's in the first part of the plan that we wrote. Yeah, we're really kind of building up how to recommend, I think that seat got planted in, by the last plan in terms of the idea of creating that board. But what I would say, with the elements that are on this page, if there are ones that we want to pull out here, we can build those into the goals and objectives because we have to also have to fulfill the state's requirements. Not only goals and objectives, but there will be a chapter in the, that'll basically be a matrix like we did in the master plan. And that will be showing the action plan for how these things will take place. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna categorize these actions and these recommendations into immediate, you know, immediate and very short-term, like these are the things that should happen first, kind of like putting in chronological order. Medium-term goals, which can be, when we think of medium-term goals, be something that starts relatively soon, but then will try to be finished up by, within the five-year life of the plan before we rewrite an amendment. And then there's long-term goals. And those can go out fifteen, twenty years, we don't have to specify. That could be obtaining the, you know, indoor recreation facility, you know, with a full village and full support and taxpayers, you know, something like that could be long-term. But those items can be called out because by putting them on paper, you put things on paper, you get those ideas in front of people and those ideas can then eventually morph into something, you know, come to fruition. So I guess that's, from our perspective as the planners looking to draft the document, we really want to know what you guys want to say at this point, what things you guys feel are key, you know, and what type of teeth we want to have, we want to make it a short-term thing, you know, say this must happen. Because I think in the goals that we're putting forth, the creation of the Recreation Board and the subsequent budget that would come or operating cost for them is really the first thing that goes down the council and market tackle. And then after that, it's kind of, it comes up to that board as they assemble to look at these pieces and move the plan because they'll be the ones who execute the plan.
Well, I know that the one thing that I've heard, I don't know about Loretta Mill, but in talking to people about the survey and in talking to people just in general in the community that we're here at that workshop and such, the biggest thing is either a Parks and Recreation Board, some kind of department, some kind of director, somebody to start it, to start the ball rolling, to start facilitating events, to start making things. We do have parks and stuff that are here, we have available space that's here. We have people here that are always willing to come out to different events, the music in the park and stuff. It just seems like it's always so disjointed, is what everybody's constantly said, you know. The music in the park, people know about it, other people don't know about it. It's kind of put up by, you know, it's run by, you know, Brett kind of spearheads it, but you know, you get a certain section of people or whatever that just, because of their daily travels and whatever throughout the village, they just miss it, you know. Whether it be social media travels or, you know, actual physical travels. So to have an actual Parks and Rec department that actually is in charge of not only putting events together, but marketing events that are here and making sure that the community is aware and involved and everything else, that's the biggest thing that I've heard. So I think the implementation of that board or chairperson or something to lead that is the biggest thing that I've heard from everybody. Because they said that we do have things that are here, we do have things that are happening, it just seems like it's also kind of random, in here and here, so.
Yeah, there definitely are, you know, I think one of the things we did, we did discover through the process, there's a lot of people providing service, different groups, you know, you got the baseball, the kids in August.
Soccer that started up now, we have the football, we have the Little League, we have, you know, these different things and they're all run by separate entities.
And a lot of people in the survey said they're doing a great job, you know. That maybe isn't a place for the village to go. But at the same time, there's partners and people like Brett and whoever he works with to bring music to the park.
Right.
Definitely all of your events could definitely benefit from a partner or coordinating group.
I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with Ra-Ra in Rochester. Although it's out of Macomb, it's obviously neighbors, you know, Macomb County, the Rochester Area Recreation Authority. Then there are several communities of Macomb that are like it, I'm just familiar with the Rochester ones, that's where I'm from originally. It's very, you know, they run dance, you know, they have dance programs that's run through, you know, Ra-Ra that Ra-Ra promotes. They have Little League that runs through Ra-Ra, Ra-Ra promotes. They have, you know, all these different things. Doesn't mean that other people can't run it, doesn't mean that other people don't run it as their baby, doesn't run it as their thing. But it's all kind of centrally located with that one entity that kind of oversees the scheduling, the timing, the, you know, application process for, you know, people that want to participate, blah, 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 blah. That way it's not, you know, and I know everybody has their own thing and I know that, you know, Little League wants to have it, still its own thing, but it doesn't mean we can't have a central board that kind of helps guide and drive.
What I also heard, what I also heard was, or just like you said, a clearinghouse for all that information. One go-to place or one go-to group that you could find out if you move to the community. My kid wants to play baseball, you know, if you go there and get that information, get connected to those people.
Well, and it's just the way, you can still have all these other entities doing their own thing, have Parks and Rec, for lack of a better term, facilitate the marketing for it. Even if it's a website where you can post things, something as simple as that. So there's one hub where everybody can go and if I run the Little League, I can post my events at this hub and if you want to find out about the Little League, you can go there and find out about it. So it's one place that everybody can go, whether you have a group or whether you're looking for a group.
As my experience professionally working with the city of Utica and their downtown development authority, they host like seven main events every year, you know, and they've marketed themselves on it, they've become, you know, they've become standards in the community every year. Yet other groups bring, put those on them. But the DDA kind of puts a blanketing, you know, they put a blanketing wrap around it, they're the ones who market it. They get the word out, they spread the word through the city.
Through what mechanisms?
In the case of the, in the case of the community, they do take ads out in the paper. Macomb Daily for large events, like they have their big car show event, they got their river walk event.
The Ice Fest.
Ice Fest, yeah.
Danny Manuel Looser puts on a festival or something and stuff like that.
And with that, they kind of co-market. But what's great about the city being involved in that is that the city's been able to help structure where those events take place, how the vendors' tents get set up, they have that role in it. But what they also kind of, what I've seen happen is people who have come in as vendors to say their car show event, now can go back to the city and go, you know, we really liked the event, we'd like to come here and have a tent or a presence at your other ones and it's helped grow. You know, they've been able to help grow by just having a one-stop shop. As opposed to someone maybe having, and I don't know if the players, but running someone down at the school, getting Rocket Fest information or having to go to Barper to figure out what road sellers, how to get a tent there. That could be a one-stop clearing shot through that group.
Right.
And that would be kind of them, over time, reaching out to those groups and building those partnerships.
Can I ask a question or enter information? I don't know if you're all aware, but Village New Haven's entered into a contract with NEMC Channel 6 and it's now open, the channel is open to New Haven, so all of your community is seeing this Channel 6, which is one of the reasons that we're taping your meetings for you. But we also have a bulletin board that you're welcome to use, that you could advertise, you can put your baseball schedules on there, your event schedules, your concerts in the park, advertise them on the bulletin board.
What is that timetable that turned around? If we rag it up in a press release and you get it on a Wednesday,
fax it over to us on a Wednesday, you should see it up on the bulletin board, probably no later than Friday. I don't do the actual scheduling myself, our coordinator does. But getting it on the bulletin board is usually relatively quick, so.
No, Channel 6 is just a Comcast channel?
It's a peg channel through Comcast for the surrounding communities.
But Comcast is the only carrier that you're able to have?
On this Channel 6, yes.
On the Channel 6, correct.
But now the meetings and things and the events, like we taped your Rocket Fest a couple of weeks ago, that goes up onto YouTube, so that's worldwide.
Right.
Did they tell you when we broadcast, because I didn't find us. When I thought about it, I would look.
Did you look on YouTube?
Six and Twelve.
No, we're not on Twelve, that Twelve was out of Fort Hearn.
I looked at Six and Twelve.
In St. Clair.
And I didn't see.
I don't know what his schedule, like I said, I don't schedule it where the videotape media goes actually on for the schedule. I do the taping. So, but you can call our coordinator at 784-0066 and he can tell you when it's out.
What's his name?
Bill Bradley.
Bill Bradley?
Yep.
Good news man's name. Hi, I'm Bill Bradley.
Yep. So I just want to make sure that you guys take as much advantage of Channel 6 as you can.
Yeah, we gotta, gotta get used to it now.
Yes, and it'll take a while for your community to get used to that it's there as well.
What channel you use is, I'm sorry to interrupt. But it's all like go up advertising, whatever channel you decide to use, whether it's a TV bulletin board or a website or they do a quarterly, if our department decides to go quarterly or a monthly newsletter, it's the hub. So if you have, like I said, if you run a Little League and you want to promote something, you come to the Village Rec Department and then they can put it out on whatever their channels are that they have to use. So it's just kind of like a place for everybody to come.
So there's definitely, that's definitely one function, a group, you know. So I mean, definitely, I agree, it's profound importance of moving forward, I think it's getting something, getting a body like that established.
Because one of the things that I, you know, see on a regular basis and I, and Bill may see this too, to a degree, having kids in the school, when you're involved in very school webpages that are out there, there are several at the high school, there are several at elementary school, there are several. You end up seeing a thousand questions. How do I get Little, how do I get soccer, how do I get basketball? Who do I talk to about this? And the parents whose kids are now getting old enough to play in these events, board the residents to the community, you know. So then they want to know, how do I get involved? So in school is typically, one of the school pages is typically where they first turn a lot of times to try to find information. If we had a more profound Parks and Rec department or at least a presence of some sort or some kind of board that was willing to put forth an honest, genuine effort to say, okay, we're going to, this is what we're going to do, then obviously it will become, not originally, not initially, but over time, become known as the place to where all that information.
You know, what I don't understand, Jeremy, when I came through New Haven schools, it was point central for information. So that every student that went to school knew what was going on because stuff came home, you know. Where's the breakdown? Why is it?
Well, I think that there's several, I think right now, I think that there's several different groups. You have not in our house, you have each class has its own, you know, kind of Facebook page and stuff. You have, you know, some other different groups that are there, the parent group, you know, at the high school and you have the PTO, the parent group at the elementary school, the middle school. In the elementary school wing, the middle school has its own PTO page and...
So there's no pulling together of that?
And so there's not a lot of pulling together of that. And not to mention the fact that, you know, and Bill testified to this, you know, it's less as they get into high school to a degree, but, I mean, yes, there's stuff that comes home regularly with the kids. The problem is sometimes you have, you know, a stack this thick that comes home to the kids and, you know, you gotta pay and trust the kids to make it home. And then you gotta beat through it all and what stuff is this and what stuff is that, you know.
Plus it's in the summertime, early September.
Right.
It doesn't, isn't very helpful.
Yeah, that all shuts down.
You know, kind of find out about that. So I mean, using the Parks and Rec Department as even as like a central hub for all Parks and Rec type activities, so it could be a website, but it could be a forum page, you know, you could have different topics, coaches forum, you know. And then they can all have their own. So and then each, you'll accept for each one of those separate pages in the forum where there'll be more, more guys like in the ministry or something for the Little League. So if people have questions about it, they go into that section and ask a question. It's a good way to find them.
And that's exactly correct. And then not to belabor, I guess, this point, I guess my initial thought too to what you had said. Yes, if you went through New Haven schools, that was it. And I've heard that from several different people, you know, the schools, the source.
Yeah.
I think I've talked to Brett about that. I've talked to, you know, different other people, Jamie, stuff, I've talked about that. You know, the schools where you got all your info. The thing is, New Haven has dramatically changed with the way that it's happened. Now we have a lot of people that are here within the last few years, you know, within, they come from communities to where they have these different types of rec programs and stuff like that. And that's many communities, a school isn't your hub for major information of what's going on because they're larger communities than what New Haven is. They're not as, you know, they're not the little, you know, bed and breakfast, house and anything kind of community that new, you know, close to any kind of community that New Haven has been in the past. So they come from these other communities and they look at these other entities to provide the information and not necessarily the school itself.
The school would be bespoke.
Right.
As opposed to the hub, the Parks and Rec would be the hub, the school would be the part.
That's cool. You know, I just remember like whenever it was time to sign up for basketball, there'd be a massive banner in the lobby so that everybody by the end of...
But I think that's one thing with the Parks and Rec Department, we could have a massive banner across, you know, at various spots or even across, you know, Main Street here in town or whatever, you know, basketball sign up and, you know, whatever. And then, but I think that everybody I've talked to, I guess, and that's my biggest caveat, everybody I've talked to, that was their biggest thing, is we don't, there's so much that happens that I don't know about.
Got you, got you. Okay, because I think when we did the park this year, what was significant, but having it as the fountain park was that people saw it.
Yes.
Coming home, I mean, they're like, you know. Because we'd been normally doing it over at Haven Ridge off of the main drag and only people who really knew were those who were accustomed to knowing that they're. But by being on Main Street, it was a very visible. And I think what I am hearing here, you know, is something that I'm certainly in favor of, you know, because one of the things that I've been hearing is the same thing, somebody has to coordinate. Where you almost need, like a public relations director, media type that deals with the video, with the television, that deals with the press, that deals with all of the entities, all of these organizations so that there is an outreach and there is a two-way communication. Even if, I mean, you've got the online, you've got all those online accesses. And every time I go on Facebook, I see something different with New Haven. So, you know, because I got only one page, I got linked to another page, so I see a number of, you know, these websites that you're talking.
And I know that council and chancellor is in the process right now of trying to put a lot of those different types of things where it was so disjointed in that respect together, that way, you know.
Everybody just get tabbed on the village website page.
Right.
But something that you could do, even, a lot of people, there's a lot of older people in town at our house.
That's true.
You do direct marketing. It's not as complicated as traditional direct marketing because we don't have to figure out our audience, we already know what that is. We don't have to buy a list, we already have all the addresses, you know, just get them from the water department because you're gonna send it to every one of the fifteen hundred, two thousand addresses that are in New Haven. You do a monthly or quarterly newsletter and you tell everybody what's going on, you announce it when it's gonna be in the website, it gets it right into each one, every one of those houses. Can't force them to read it, but like I said, we're not spending a couple of grand, ten grand on a list and figuring out what our demographic is because we already know.
You do know, we're gonna pre-cost.
That's what, if I was a twenty-eight-year marketing professional, I would suggest that that route to start with. Kind of more twenty-eight years.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think just cabinet to decide the direction you want to go and pull the items we really want to highlight and we can get a draft together and have something we'll respond to.
See, because let me tell you something. At the conclusion of this, of this process, and we have a document, you know, that's gonna be significant because of the fact there really isn't anything to dovetail behind. Like we had examples when we were working on the master plan, there is a structure and there was a process and we followed that. But with the rec plan, this is really kind of revolutionary because we're creating a document that other people will borrow.
Will utilize.
Yes. And so as a result of it, I would, I want something to happen.
Would it be too bold for this group as we are putting together our recommendation to village council to adopt this plan, to also entertain the resolution with that school after its adoption, to establish that rec board?
But that's what we were supposed to do.
I mean, we are, but it's, but someone has to have the dialogue with them.
That's right, the expectation is.
So do we, so do we, we wrap it all up, package it that way? Or does someone need to go off in a room with the mayor and, you know, the village president, have that discussion, saying this is something we need to bring forward, let's bring it to council and discuss it there? Because they're gonna be seeing the document for the first time in some, well, they'll have their sixty-three day, you know, hopefully all of the ready before they vote.
Right, and I think I like the way you did it with the master plan. It was presented and you basically said, you know, in the meantime, take the time to look at it.
Now here's the next step.
Right, exactly. You know, and make sure that they look at it and then at the end, we make a recommendation that they implement.
Yes.
Because that's what we do, okay, we make recommendations. And it might be tagged with, because first thing they're gonna say is money. You know, where's the money gonna come from, where's the money gonna come from? And there, I've talked to business owners, just like, I know you guys do. And there are business owners who want to finance things, who want to work with us and do something. So, you know, and I'm hoping that what we will be able to do is at the conclusion of this, present a document that not only explains what the recreation plan is, short-term, long-term, but that we have an immediate goal. And one thing that kept coming up, and I know why you're talking, because people keep talking about these water parks.
Well, that's one, I mean, that is stuff that comes up, but I mean, that's not a cheap.
It's not a cheap thing, but it's not something that is unattainable.
No, no.
You know. Yeah, yeah, what would happen with the fountain, absolutely, you know, and people... But I'm saying, business owners.
Right.
I'm saying.
The whole idea of putting this together is this is the first step involved in the process of getting grants.
Yes, yes. And the grants are up here because, you know, when we write those grants, we're going for major, major projects. And I'm not saying the water park is not major, however, if you talk with our business owners like Jack, they're willing to come up with plans, not only for donations, but fundraising so that this thing can... We, you know, I just want us to do something, I want some action. I just want us to do something, I want some action, you know, that there is, there is a goal. This is what we recommend that you do, initiate this thing, get this committee together, and within eighteen months, we wanna do this. We wanna have it, you know, and, and there will be business owners here that would stand with us. Because I think they're tired of us just slinging along here, they wanna see us do something.
Don't disagree?
You know, and, and that's, in, that's what I'd really like to do, is make the council work. They have us here to make recommendations, we can recommend anything we want. That's the beauty of being on this committee, we don't have to do it. We can recommend anything we want, and, and, uh, that's where I'd like this thing, you know, at this point, as we're putting things in this column, that in the end, there is a goal, and it's something that in eighteen, you know, people can start seeing constructed, just like the water fountain, and it has a conclusion. Um, and then we have a relationship with the business owners because there is talk, you know, in this town about a DDA. And how they want to introduce themselves is to be a part of the project, do something. You know, so that, I just, I, I guess I just identified when I saw our next project, we finished this. As we finish this, is that, you know, but, I don't think the ultimate would be what it, what it is today.
No.
Without that.
I would say the same thing for both Richmond and New Haven.
Yes.
Because, uh, they have very strong DDA's, and over time, as they've grown, over the decades, they've been able to put on a lot back into the community.
Yes, yes, you know, they're doing things, and you can see it. And I was over there today, this is, you know, this is a beautiful, beautiful town. You know, uh, and people walking up and down the streets, and umbrellas on the sidewalk.
Well, you know, you got good old days in Richmond, that's kind of not next, not this weekend here, but the following weekend, uh, looking at our library. It's a huge unit, I mean, it's huge. Um, you know, I mean, they have, uh, a Dillon Derby, they have Figure Eight, they have, uh, some tractor pulls that happen there, you know?
What do you mean, what's the Figure Eight? You talking about racing cars? What are you talking about?
Yeah.
Ah.
And they, uh, uh, they have a huge grade that runs right down Main Street, and it shut off the whole Main Street, it's like two and a half hours long, three hours long. And, uh, you know, and then in the process of the whole thing, they also do a classic car show, and a classic car cruise that happens up and down Main Street. They can, kinda like what Memphis does, or they do like bed races and all this other stuff, they, I mean, their flyer, you know, that they have, they schedule these events, it's three pages big. You know, so, we don't have the residents that they have, but at the same token, I think we can do better than what we've done in the past. I think we need some direction as far as to, you know, but you gotta have people in place that has a vision to accomplish these things. And I think that that's one of the things that the Parks and Rec Department also comes in plan to fruition to do, you know? And then they develop a committee for such things, such as, you know, a good old days committee, and on the good old days committee, people fight to get out of the committee to a degree now, because, so, you know, but it's, but like you said, I mean, if it wasn't for the downtown development authority that they have, their Richmond and stuff, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't have that. So. Their entire festival, BB Park, is, was, you know, funded out of DDA dollars. Over time.
Something like the water slide is huge at the end. Um, I was looking at the data that, uh, we were given last month, uh, that shared, you know, some, some nice information in terms of demographics, so that we would have a, have priority in terms of what group we're, we are addressing. And the fifteen, the five to fifteen-year-olds, um, we have, you know, basically is the largest in terms of the population. Um, uh, so one of the things that, that I, you know, I really wanted us to concentrate on as we're putting this thing together, is that there, is, we have to do more. You know, we have one or two events, uh, I think we need, we, we need to, to do more activities, and these things are small. You know, things like the outdoor, outdoor rooms, uh, you know, they, they have the things now where they have the big, big screens that blow up, you know? Um, and I'm, I'm thinking, you know, things that are family oriented, so the kids can have opportunities to get together. Um, you know, like during the summertime, the school closed, so everything is not just about.
Those are small, and those are small activities and events that, that can be done at, at a reasonable cost or for sponsorship.
Music that appeals to them, you know, hip-hop and, and, uh, rock and, you know, more outdoor activities, um, is what I got from my neighbors. More activities in the local parks. Um, be creative, bring in theatrical troops. Um, and then the movies came up again, and then, there are temporary water slides, right? One of my neighbors said, you know, well, in the meantime, you know, while you're working for the permanent ones, they got temporary ones that you can bring them in, and, you know, the people would bring them in for the day. And, uh, and that kinda gets people used to something like that, um, being available for entertainment for young people. Um, some of those, I don't know, I said, they were talking about the water slide being a priority. It kept coming up. Recreational building. Um, and that's, you know, in your page too, and we were talking about the Haven, um, Twentyside Clark Street.
Right.
Yeah, uh, area, so people are talking about, we, we need a center, someplace where the kids can go.
And one of the ideas that, there's, there's, there's Haven, is a Haven place that's operating across from the one park there?
The entire person with Triangle Park, that one.
Yeah, and they're, and they're, what's their, I don't exact, what's their mission? Do they do programming for kids after?
Yeah, they're an nonprofit, they do stuff for kids, they've had kids do like community cleanup, and, um, they did like one, one boot camp for kids. They're supposed to be doing a free CPR class sometime before school starts, but they haven't contacted them yet.
Well, and then they, the schools, during the school year, help with tutoring, power kids, um, I think they had, uh, a senior, uh, thing that they did this, uh, summer.
It's kind of a community event.
Kind of a community. But is it a place as a kid I can just after school drop in and go there, or is it? I think that's what they want to have happen eventually, I think that they're struggling with trying to find their, you know, how that'll be done to where they have people, proper guidance there, proper people there, and all that kinda stuff. The staff, I think, they need to do something.
Yeah, I think they're suffering from the same thing everything else is, and that is communication, so people will know what's going on in there. I mean, I met some pastors.
They had a pretty good lot of people there, and there's a lot of.
They did? Oh, okay, I haven't seen anybody in there. Uh, but it's interesting that that should come up because philanthropic activities was the next thing that came up. Um, that it seems when you do events and you attach some payback, paying it back, people respond, um, well to that. And, um, you know, our cancer walk, um, pays testimony to that, but I think that helps in terms of fundraising too. We need to think in terms of, uh, payback and being philanthropic, and that's also good because it influences the young people, um, so that they know that, that is something, that's a good thing. So, that kind of thing, I think, and when we think about programming, is something that we need to, uh, add on. What did they say? Okay, there was a pretty significant percentage of people who said additional youth sporting events? What are they talking, man, what are they talking about? What do you think?
Additional youth sporting events?
I mean, additional youth sporting?
Well, I, that seems to be the biggest current category on the list.
Yeah.
I think that, I think people want to see more of a cohesive deal, I think that.
Okay, pulling it together.
They're pulling it, I think, I mean, that's what I think, I think, because there is things, there, there is the basketball.
Yeah.
There is the baseball, there's starting to be the flag football, there's the youth soccer that's just started, um, in its inaugural season here. So, I mean, there are, you know, the main sports and stuff that are out there, but I think people wanna see kind of a more cohesive unit, whether they go into this person for that, and this organization for that, and this organization for that, and they want us to kind of a, you know, all together kind of thing.
Yeah, come right back to what we said before, okay.
But, because I don't think people realize all the different things that are out there either, and it doesn't, the planning sometimes doesn't always go together very well either, because maybe this might be going on at the same time as this and that, when you could maybe stagger them out a little bit. So, but like, for instance, you know, most schools, I think one of the issues that we have to get out of soapbox, one of the issues we have in the football program here at the school, besides the fact that we've ended up having a different culture every year, is the fact that there's no pre-football program in the community for the, when I went to school, we started playing football in fifth grade, you know, there was a community football program, and then in seventh and eighth grade, there was the school football, the school facilitated football. You know, and we don't have that here, I understand.
We started seventh and eighth grade back in the day.
Yeah, and so.
And then to junior.
And, well, we went to, and then to JV, you know, and we went to high school, you're on JV, and then to varsity. Most schools have that seventh and eighth and stuff, and we don't have that.
Okay.
You know, so, I would love to see that personally, uh, personally, though, I think that could be awesome stuff that people are talking about too, is the lack of middle school sports and stuff like that that we have available for the kids, and that kinda thing too. But that's just my personal observation.
I'd like to see the village take more of an interest and put an investment and work with private and local groups already doing events. It seems silly to ask the village to do more youth rec programs when it would just compete with the hard-working, already done, and our group, other groups. Also, would like to see property next to Amherst, okay? And to a temporary recreational facility, okay? I think we would address that.
Just a recreational facility next to Amherst, oh, okay. Want to know, you got what facility they want next to Amherst? Or are some facilities that are unwanted? You know, it, what is that property best suited for, if you guys, I mean, I don't know it, I know it's.
For the second?
If you were gonna do rec.
It costs you enough, just to grade it would cost you more money than we had in the budget, it's, it's a very unshaped field, I mean.
Been out there.
What's it, like twenty acres?
Probably about that.
You can hardly get a tractor through there, because it's all.
Yeah, and there's a drone, or two, it's in there.
Well, I believe, I think they were originally gonna be in like the next phase of Amherst.
Okay.
And then, you know, when everything crashed, probably ended up going back to the village. But, I mean, just to, just to only have a flat field would probably cost a small portion.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you were planning on developing, there's no need, no sense in doing it, you could do it right now. I know Rob was talking about it in one of the meetings, like, get in there with a tractor and cut it, it's a pretty brutal deal just because it's something even.
So it would be, that would be something that might be a grant type of project to get capital to.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot you can do, but it's just a big twenty-year field.
Now, the other thing I, that I'll point out, the common grants, you know, it just, bringing it up now, is you've got the big grants from the state through the, uh, through the, uh, through the D, through the DNR. Uh, and a lot of those, as I said at the last meeting, I started digging into this one, the state is really funding acquisition, they're not funding development grants in large dollar amounts. People who are coming who want to acquire property for a new park or add to a state park, that's the type of funding. Well, if you already have land, you wanna do ball diamonds, that's not a big, that's not, those, those grant requests aren't getting fulfilled over the last three years. But, the passport program, which is the ten-dollar license fee that goes on the license, those grants are a lot easier to go for. I think they have a, I wanna say they have a ceiling of either fifty or a hundred thousand dollars is the max. Uh, but they're great for little things, and those I think probably where we would start out, because I wouldn't think, in, in, in most cases where people are going for these acquisition dollars with the state, the communities or the partners who are going, are coming with a significant amount matched to the table. And the projects that are getting funded, or projects that are getting matched at the rate of thirty-five to forty percent of the total grant dollars. Passport projects are a lot different than that, I think, I think it's only like, it's, it's a small percentage that needs to be put up. We can look and see what those numbers are, but for the scale of things where we are starting out, I think it offers us opportunity.
Yeah.
There's a passport project that can rehabilitate a ball, you know, they can, you could redo dugouts or something like that, or you could develop some other type of.
Update existing equipment.
Or some, or some element that needs to, that, that is on our wish list for the fountain park. You know, be a gazebo or some other type of structure, or even, uh, even restroom and drinking facilities, yeah, we'll take a look at those.
Good. Awesome. Wonder if anybody else has anything else to, uh, and, or the planner can pull together?
I'd like to request that next month they turn the air on.
That would be great.
It seemed to turn it off at the, at the other meeting.
I wasn't gonna ask, I thought maybe you guys would just be real frugal.
No, that's, that's a lot, didn't it?
What, the air button?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think Marcus is the one that has the key to it, so.
Maybe we should request for Marcus to.
I will.
Turn it on.
Request Marcus, request Marcus is present next, next month.
You guys.
Marcus is present, and we won't tell him why.
Yeah, wait. I don't know, it feels pretty good.
Bring your key.
Form. You have it there?
Form.
Oh, you work. It's a little sticky, I might run it for me for Tuesday.
I said, I'm good, okay, we're gonna get it out of here. Nobody else has anything else under this topic, anything new? Uh, made up some discussion? Two ninety-nine, um, you know what, I would like to ask you, Jeff, at the end of last meeting, you mentioned something about, um, Mr. Drake's property?
Yes.
We don't have to worry about that, has that?
As far as I know, I haven't heard anything back from the building inspector.
Okay.
So I think we're okay. I don't know of anything that's coming towards us related to that, if anything.
Okay. It seems I don't have to hear about it, I really didn't know what to tell, see, the way we really discussed it was just kinda like a FYI?
Mm-hmm.
What's going on, you know?
I got a call from the building inspector asking me to look at the zoning ordinance regarding uses of what's permitted in the Blight Industrial Zone. Because I guess he was looking at the property George had acquired to the south of him, and he was looking at Blight in terms of a Blight site, citation. A bunch of vehicles and stuff he indicated that were on the backlog. But after talking to George, he advised him that he was leasing part of the property to someone who's operating it or repairing something out there. He was asking me about this, if that would require, you know, by the ordinance, that would require a special land, his request from the village, this body of village council. So, I've been getting a lot of those types of requests coming from building, you know, people, ask people, okay, I'm looking at this, what can I do? You know, so I've been, you know, I said, hey, I'm here to interpret the ordinance, and I've been giving those types of interpretations. Um, uh, the other one, I think, just to bring up, it came, is the, the, someone I guess is looking, was looking to purchase the property that's on for sale at twenty-six Mall Road next to the east of the Riverwood Tracks, was the original, the bus, someone looking for, has a trucking piece. So there were some questions that came through the building department as to what the process was. I said, it's in that industrial, a site plan needs to be done, and it needs to come before planning commission to meet, before, uh, before the inspector can provide a, um, a sign up of, um, compliance of zoning.
Okay.
So I don't know where that's, and I spoke, I was asked to contact the owner, so I talked to the, or the guy who was interested, and explained him the process, and just basically, you know, basically told him, here's, here's what you need to do related to the zoning ordinance, so I'm getting those types of requests.
Okay, find out what Richmond Recy line didn't help with that.
Yes, yeah, but I don't know the history, so I don't, I don't bring any of that stuff up, I just.
Well, they didn't do anything they were supposed to, and he was like, you have to do this, this, and this before you can start operations, okay, no problem, then he just started working.
But there was no
He didn't comply with anything. Well, no, he was, there was a, I think there was a order, he told him
Oh, was there?
Not working, but he's still foot locked and he, he's kind of, it's in receivership. By there, the lot's cleared out and it's big for sale and receivership sign, so it'd be I don't know anything anymore. But he didn't, I don't think he did anything on the counter, dude, he just didn't do it. He wanted, he like bought the property, wanted to start working, because he was dead. I was like, well, unfortunately, you gotta jump through hoops and
You know, and there's, and there's a fee schedule that, that said that, you know, the building department for all these different inspections and stuff. I told him, I said, you know, I said, all I can do is follow what your guidelines are here, and if he's looking into a site plan, do you have a per screen? Usually you say, the ordinance says a site plan needs to be done for one of these types of reviews, you have a set fee. You know, maybe, and I, I suggested to Laura, I said, if, if people are protesting the fee and the fees too high, then you should bring that up with council, because they're the ones who said that, and maybe, even, maybe this, the review should be adjusted in light of whatever the county, you know, I don't know what the difference is between
Didn't they just set those fees recently, I believe, it was just recently that they, not too long ago, that they went through and reset.
They remounted.
But not the state.
And I thought they were still low compared to everybody else, but
And I think it's every, every community has those, you know, you have your fees to conduct business, businesses should, I don't think that businesses shy away from it.
Right.
You know, businesses are more, would be, are more, I think more appreciative that the community can be completely upfront and give them, give them a clear and concise list.
If a business can't come up with a couple hundred dollars to get fees.
Exactly.
If a business can't come up with a couple hundred dollars to feed, then this is kind of, this is
And even, even if you're talking on, I think with
Couple thousand.
You're lucky, a couple thousand, but he's going to be operating a multi-thousands, tens of thousands of dollars of equipment and stuff in and out of there. And as I've reminded the building department each time I speak to them, is that this ordinance isn't here to be prohibitive and not to restrict people, but it's here to protect the community. We want economic development, we want that truck operation to be there, but we want it to be a good neighbor while it's there. You know, we want them to be played by these folks, you know, comply aside.
Well, because if you don't, then you end up looking like in several spots in parts of Detroit, and then nobody wants to, you know, nobody wants to come here and bring another, you know, business, so.
What were you, as a part of the plan report, what should we expect from you?
What we will do next week, or for next week, for next month, we will try to, we will put before you, um, the draft text of the goals and objectives and the action plan. As, as, as I'm kind of seeing it in my mind from all the input we've gathered, we'll bring it back to you and actually get it distributed to you guys before meetings so you can read through it. And then what we'd ask you to do is, let's, let's, let's tear it down, just to make sure it's everything we want to say. Uh, make sure that we've put, that, that the projects or items that are pulled out of here are in categories that make sense, short-term, long-term, in terms of that action plan. And we're getting pretty close to being
Yeah, that was my question.
So I think, so I think what, at that point, we will be at the, uh, that'll be our October meeting. Uh, by the end of October, we do that. We should have, uh, have a final draft here for November first, which we can then release, we could take to, we could request city council release for sixty-three day review. All right, I'll, I have to look at that, I don't know if it's sixty-three days, I think it's less on correct plan. It might only be sixty days or something, or thirty days on a rec plan. Um, and we're gonna have this wrapped up in December with that.
So October six, bring back basically what we did today. And then
We want to get a fin, we want to get a final draft to you guys early before November meeting, so you guys can read it through. Uh, and then actually approve it with any last minute changes that you want us to see. And say, hey, we're approving it with these changes, then we will affect those changes, then that could go on to council, because there would be, there would be the following
November tenth?
Tenth, and we're on the eighth, third, so they're the following week, so that would give us time to make any, any last minute changes this group deems needs to be in there and have a final draft in front of, at least a sixty-three day public review draft.
Okay, so they would get their sixty-three day
Yeah, I think it's thirty, I keep saying sixty-three, that's the master plan, I believe it's only thirty days that we need to have it out for the parks and rec.
Okay, so their December meeting?
Yep, that we would have, we would ask them in their November meeting to let it go, to let it out. Uh, we'll receive comments through that period, and then at their December meeting, we would ask them to host a public hearing. Uh, they will, they will close, we'll close the review, have a public hearing, and that's, if they feel comfortable that night, they could, they could vote that guy into existence then. We could, we could finish it out before going into the If it goes sideways, then all we have an entire month to work with them. Actually, we have two months, you know, we had, worst case scenario, we get it out a week till, uh, February, approval by then, we'll still get it into the state in time.
Because we can start for, uh, grant writing, what, in March?
Uh, once we have, once we have the, yeah, once we have it in March, we'll, in, in, in the month of March, we'll get a thumbs up from the state uh, saying that they've approved it. Uh, and then I believe it's right, I think it's April first is the, it, it opens the grant, uh, writing for application process starts to open. And usually awards happen this time of year prior to the, their closing their fiscal year, like October one. So, yeah, this is September first, October first, yeah.
So let me say, thinking about some things.
Yeah.
Thinking. All right, anything else from the plan?
Yep, nothing else.
Anything else from the table? Hearing that, I have another change, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, the notion has been made and second, uh, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh four P M. Thank you.